I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, any additions or deletions the agenda?
No, sir.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from the last public business meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Up first tonight, we have a presentation. This is our comprehensive annual financial report, and that's actually why we were a few minutes late. We were meeting with Rick Hoover, with Turnbull Hoover and Cale. And Administrator Bennett, would you like to tee that up?
Sure. Commissioners, as you know, we have our audit done every year. Ricky is here today to report on the 2000 fiscal year 2020 comprehensive annual financial report. It's actually been done for a little bit of time now, but between Rick's tax schedule right now and our schedules, he's just now coming over to present. But with that, I'll turn it over to Rick and let him present.
Thank you, Jason. Again, yes, I'm here to present the fiscal year 2020 audit report. We issued, once again, an unmodified opinion, clean opinion. That means that the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. I'll note the general fund on page C11 and C12, total revenues were $92.8 million, total expenditures $88.5, with some transfers to other funds of about $4 million. So for a total positive net change of $193,000. And again, this is for 2020. The financial report is already, I believe, on the county's website. Saw that earlier today. That's really all I have this evening. I'd like to thank Jason Bennett, Pam Diaz, and the rest of the finance office staff for another fine year and all their assistance. The audit lasts, you know, it goes on for about six months, so it really is a burden on the staff, and they handle that very well. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Gentlemen, any discussion?
No, sir. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Brody.
Thank you, Rick.
Very good. Okay. Moving on to our public hearing this evening. Item two is a fiscal year 2022. This is the preliminary budget hearing. Administrator Bennett?
Thank you, Commissioners. I apologize you have to hear from two straight CPAs, so bear with me. So, as you know, we had a work session last week. Tonight is our regularly scheduled preliminary budget hearing, so your first chance to see the entire budget as we have it right now. So we'll present this tonight, and the plan right now would be to adopt this budget on May 27. So with that, I'll jump right in. As we talked last week, balance budget of $96,458,503. And just a couple of quick highlights for you there. You can see property taxes. We haven't had this here too many years, or for many years. Thankfully, we've actually had a little bit of growth this year, so we can highlight a positive change here. You can see $798,000 came in this year, thanks to about 1.8% growth. So, for the first time in many, many years, this is nice growth, and it comes directly from seeing property tax, or property sales doing very well for us over the last year. You can also see income taxes are up $650,000. Believe it or not, that's based on continued strong performance we were having up through the most recent month we've received. Seems honestly quite odd during COVID to see our income taxes go up, but that's what's been happening, and we've verified with the rest of the state, every other county in the state's seen the same kind of thing happen right now. So, we're budgeting accordingly. We're watching those revenues. We'll have to watch them going forward to make sure they hold for us. And we did adjust this number down somewhat. You can see there it says adjusted for the Governor's Relief Act. The Governor's Relief Act exempted unemployment taxes from being taxable, so that equated to about $1.7 million of loss for us. So we built that into this estimate. Final thing you see there is unexpendanted fund balance. We are using more this year, $661,000 more. I'll note, this is only our excess fund balance, so we still are maintaining our full required reserves. We keep two months' operating reserves, plus a budget stabilization amount in our fund balance, so we're still very, very well positioned, and this is just our excess that's available at this point. Same kind of slide now for expenditures, and this one's pretty easy and self-explanatory. Salaries and fringe, we have a 2% COLA broadcast in our budget for classified employees, and we have money in place for union negotiations for our six unions. Appropriations to major outside agencies, this one's not here often either. You see just $91,000 extra dollars there. That includes flat funding plus a dollar to the Board of Ed. That was at their request. And I'll note, and I'll talk about this more, that could change on us depending on Kerwin. We haven't seen the final yet. The board's going to keep us updated on that one. The other outside agencies had small increases requested, mainly the library and the health department, so we were able to fortunately fund them this year. You can see the bottom line there, debt service. This is the big reason we're able to balance our budget this year. It's down $1.8 million. The direct result of our 2020 refunding that we did back in the fall. We did that, our financial advisors sort of advising us to do so, with the interest rates being so low, we took an opportunity to refund all of our debt. And doing that, it enables us to save pretty large on our debt service for a couple of years, and we only pushed our debt out by just a few years. So it was, with COVID and sort of the unknown times we're in, it was the right move to make and a move that most other counties in the state made, and it certainly saved us this year. Here's all our property tax rates, and this one's real easy. The big red part you see up there, no change in the rates. At your request, we haven't moved any of the rates. So income taxes untouched, real property taxes untouched, recordation tax, and you can see the home state tax credit's still at 4%. So you guys ought to be commended for holding those rates yet again. This pie chart here just breaks down some of our revenues. And I won't spend a mountain of time on this, but you can see, just as you'd expect, real and personal property tax makes up almost half of our budget, 44.8%. Thankfully, it's growing a little bit this year, like I said, for the first time in some time. We've got some growth there, so it's heading in the right direction. Income taxes, same thing. That makes up 30% of our budget. Disparity grant, which is the large grant we get from the state for some disadvantaged counties, makes up almost another 10% of our budget. And then other state and federal revenue is actually quite a small piece of our budget, not quite 4%. You can see unexpendanted fund balance at the bottom is only 1.5% of our budget. That's a very good thing. You don't want to build your budget on your savings. Big thing to note here would be three sources when you're talking about property taxes, income taxes, and disparity grant, makes up about 84% of our budget. So a lot of our budget's made up by just three things. Here's some of our other funds. We always focus on the general fund, which you can see at the top there, but as we build our budget, there's a lot of other pieces. Special revenue funds make up some of this. Those are the funds in the middle. Those are special purpose revenue funds that we get. Down towards the bottom are our enterprise funds. Those are the funds we operate like businesses. Just a couple of quick notes for you here on this. One excluded from what you see here, you can see water and sewer don't have a number there yet. We're still building those budgets, and we'll be presenting some water and sewer information to you at our next public meeting. Also doesn't include capital right now. That'll also be presented at our next meeting. From what you can see there, though, just a couple of things. You can see our Rocky Gap slots revenue sitting at about $2.4 million. It had taken a dive on us during COVID. Happy to report that as of now, they're trending back up and should be on course to meet that budget for both fiscal year '21 and hopefully for fiscal '22. You can also see transit fund there of $2.3 million. While that's a big number for the fund, the good news there is just $178,000, and that comes from our general fund in the form of a transfer. All the rest of it's in the form of federal and state grants, so get a lot of bang for a buck with transit. If we had to pick one slide from this entire presentation to use, it would be this one. And we do use this throughout the year, various places we go and talk. This is just a breakdown of our budget, you know, broken down by the dollar bill. Everyone thinks of things that way. So, few things to point out. You can see education on the left side there in blue makes up about 40% of our budget. The middle section there, public safety, is now up to about 25% of our budget. That would be the growing piece of our budget, and that's largely the direct result of EMS, our expanded EMS operations throughout the county has been necessitated by losing so many volunteers. So that tends to grow, but in there you got the sheriff at about $3.9 million, our detention center at just over $8 million. EMS is now about $5 million annually, and our fire companies make up about another million in there. You can see public works in the orange is just under 12%, and we're talking about our roads department and our engineering department. General government on the right is a good thing. You know, it's less than 11%. We try to keep this as low as possible. These are all the supporting services to make the education, the public safety, the public works, and other operations go. So you're talking about administrator's office, commissioner's office, finance, tax, attorney's office, state's attorney, those kinds of operations. It's always good to keep these low. We try to treat this like you would almost a nonprofit. You don't want to be spending all of your collections on your administration, so we keep this numbers as low as we can. And then one small thing to point out, you can see on the very bottom right there, economic development. See, it looks like a little piece. That's because we don't fund much of it out of our general fund. We're fortunate to have all of our economic development shell buildings leased right now, so we use the revenue we generate from them to fund our economic development operations. So while people may say, hey, we're not spending on economic development, we certainly are. It's just not having to come from our general fund. This pie chart here is just a little bit of a different breakdown than the last one. And I won't spend a mountain of time here, but you can see just about half of our budget goes right out the door in the form of appropriations, so $46 million and 47%. You can see, if you look there, just 30% roughly goes to salaries and fringe, and a lot of people think that number would be, you know, much higher in a government, but in our case, it's not. Debt service is down to just 1.2%. And I'll point out, capital outlay is actually up to 3%. It's still probably not quite enough, but we have moved in the right direction in the last few years. We were dangerously low for many years here. Now we're kind of taking care of our needs a little bit, so we've moved into a better place there. This slide we include every year to talk about services that aren't provided by municipal governments. You know, a lot of times here, you might hear, we're getting double taxed. We already get this service from the city. Well, we just do this just to show the kind of services we provide that municipalities do not. And I won't read through all of them by any means, but you can see some of the big ones: Board of Ed, detention center, our 911 operation, funding for our libraries, funding for the Board of, or for Allegheny College in Maryland, our health department, transit. They're all in here that municipalities don't fund. So you can see at the bottom, makes up about 65% of our budget. So 2/3 of our budget is for items that aren't completed by municipalities. And for the rest of the expenditures that are duplicative services, that's what tax differential's for, and we actually give a tax break to residents that live in those And I'll mention, Frostburg and Cumberland, on average, you get about a 13 cent tax break on the property taxes. So out of 0.97% rate, theirs tend to run to about 0.84, so they get a pretty sizable Our debt service transfer, we've already talked about this. We've had large savings this year. You can see the kind of categories it's spent on. As you might imagine, at the bottom, the biggest one would be the Board of Ed. That's directly because of, you know, building Mountain Ridge High School and Allegheny High School, both within the last 13 years. So those are large expenditures. You can see public safety's growing there. That's largely from our EMS radios. So, and I'll point out one last thing. We do still have these sinking funds. If you add up all those numbers, they add up to more than 1.1 million. We have a sinking fund from our refunding that's still paying debt, so we still have the debt outstanding in a balance that's taking care of it. So there it is. We always do a slide every year for Allegheny College of Maryland and the Board of Ed, so this would be the Allegheny College slide, just showing how our funding's broken down. A lot of numbers there, and you can see comparatively over the years, just a couple of things to point out. AC's enrollment is down about 4% this year. And you can see our actual spending is down slightly, and that's just because of the change in debt service. And I'll mention too, and it's on the right, this doesn't include about $360,000 annually that goes to Allegheny College from the Rocky Gap Scholarship Fund. This is just operating dollars. So the additional 360 comes from our contribution from Rocky Gap, so it's a nice shot in the arm for them. Here's the same slide for Board of Ed. One of the big things to point out, and the Board of Ed talked about it with us when they presented their budget to us, their enrollment is obviously way down this year because of COVID. Many people have pulled their kids out of school, be either homeschool or send to private schools. They feel that's a bit of an anomaly, and it should come back as we come out of COVID. What I will mention here is, even though it's flat funding plus a dollar, we actually still got hit with the education effort increase. There's an automatic escalator from the state of Maryland of 2.5%. So had we not gotten that, we'd actually had less funding to the Board of Ed. That's state mandated, so that puts us right back where we were. And as I mentioned, we're still awaiting Kerwin. That could swing this number by about $800,000. The Board of Ed's watching that closely, and so are we. You're not sure if that kicks in this year or next year just yet. So as soon as we hear there, we'll certainly make an adjustment if need be. But we certainly know, coming down the line, that extra expense is coming to the county. We will be paying that for the next several years.
And Jason, I just want to thank the Board of Ed, because I don't know if we've ever had a better relationship than we do with them right now. And they're obviously, building their fund balance is much larger than what it was, and we very much appreciate them asking us for what they need and not some pie in the sky number, because they're building their fund balance. So the fact that they only asked us for what they got last year, plus a dollar, we really appreciate it, and the residents of the county should really appreciate that, too.
Without a doubt. And on top of that, you know, for many years, we had struggles with them of receiving late audits, and as you said, maybe not always the best relations. Both have corrected themselves. Their relations are good. We work well together. They've gotten their audit straightened up. They were actually the first of our component units in the door this year, so their finances are in good shape. They got their audit in good shape, so you're absolutely right. They should definitely be commended, because they've certainly been working hard on that. Last slide, and you know, we all know this, we've been living with it for a year. COVID's still affecting us. We still don't completely know how it's going to affect us. There's a good chance that there may be as much of an 18-month lag in our loss in funding from COVID. It hasn't hit us just yet. We're all sort of watching to see if and when it does. I will note, you know, it's been discussed many times. We've distributed last year about $6 million in CARES funds. You guys were instrumental in getting that out on the streets, to our restaurants, to our small businesses, to our hotels, to housing functions, to help out the community. We have more on the way. We have about $13 million on the way, but we don't have the guidelines just yet as far as how that's spent. So once we get that, we'll also get that on the way out into the street. So this will continue to morph and change on us as we go, and we'll continue to navigate through it. So with that, that would be our preliminary budget, so what we'll do from here is, if you have any comments tonight, we'll certainly take them. The public's welcome to comment, both tonight, and we'll have a hearing at our next meeting on the 13th about this. Then we'll move to adoption on May 27. What we presented here tonight, plus a budget book, which is sitting here, is available both in hard copy and online, will be posted after the meeting tonight. So with that, I'll leave it to you for any questions.
Gentlemen, any discussion?
No, sir. Looks good. Thank you, Jason.
Nothing to add. Thank you and your staff, Jason.
Thank you, guys, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say it. A big thanks to Kirsten O'Donnell and Pam Diaz from our staff who worked on this. Kirsten's new to our office, and this was her first big project, and she did a great job on it.
Great. Yeah, this budget ended up incredible, because as we were getting the forecast last year, you know, it seemed like we were going to have huge shortfalls, and the fact that property taxes were up about $800,000 and income taxes were up $650,000 without us moving the rates, that's pretty incredible. And, you know, the only loss of revenue we saw was from Rocky Gap, and that's because they were closed, you know? They were forced to be closed. So transfer taxes, everything was up, and it turned out to be a pretty easy budget, I think.
Yeah, the first one I've had like this, that's for sure. And one last thing I'll mention is just a thanks to both the outside agencies who made requests and to our own operating departments. You know, even though we were able to fully fund requests, it's because they all understood the times we were in. They all were very modest in their requests, and they made do with what they have. So testament to everyone there. It's a big help when everyone's pitching in together, so.
Great.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If there's any public comment just on the budget, please feel free to approach the microphone? Okay. All right. All right. Moving into our action agenda tonight, item number three is Calumet Enterprises. Attorney Beeman.
Good evening, Commissioners. Commissioners, you'll recall that in February, we had representatives from Calumet, as well as our Economic Development Department here for a meeting. At that point in time, you all approved a transfer of a piece of land in the Frostburg Business Park to, at the time it was Sierra Hygiene, and now has been taken over by Calumet Enterprises. Happy to announce that as Calumet or Webster went through their plans for development there, they realized they needed a little bit of extra space. They want to expand even further than they had originally planned. So you have before you for item three, the approval for the sale of Lot 8 of the Frostburg Business Park. It's the adjacent property. That will be sold to them for $50,000 with your approval this evening.
Great. Gentlemen, any discussion?
Fantastic.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay. Gentlemen, item number four, this one's a long time coming, I think. This is a Washington Street Bridge resolution, and this would be for the Board of County Commissioners to authorize the county attorney to file a formal complaint against CSX Transportation with the Surface Transportation Board regarding the destruction and repairs to the Washington Street Bridge. And it allows the Board of County Commissioners to authorize Attorney Beeman to secure outside counsel if necessary to assist. We do have two people signed up to speak on this. If you'd like to come up first, and then we'll have our discussion after that. First, we have Ms. Terry Murphy.
Is that just me?
What's that? On the bridge, this would be on the bridge. Yep. We'll get...
I have a different name, that's okay.
Yeah. At the end is general comment. Okay.
Thank you. I'm here tonight actually to thank you for considering this. I'm Terry Murphy. I'm the president of the Washington Street Association. Last September, the Bridge Alliance had a press conference at the bridge, and Commissioner Shade at the time said this needs to be a community effort. And the community's actually been fighting pretty hard for a while, and I agree. The community is behind you in this effort. I had a number of calls today from people saying they're sorry they couldn't make it tonight, they had other obligations, but they're tickled to see that this is going on. It seems like we've been up against CSX for a very long time. At that press conference, the mayor and city council people were there. We had, the Maryland delegation was there, everybody expressing support. But I think it was Jason Buckle who said, wouldn't it be a shame if we were here a year from now saying the same thing? Well, that was seven months, and nothing has changed in seven months. So it's time to take action, and I thank you for looking at protecting and defending our heritage area and historic Washington Street. It's important to our tourism, economic development, as well as safety. I talked to somebody the other day whose father had a brain aneurysm, and she said, I got there at the same time as the ambulance. She said, you know, I'm not blaming anybody, but what if they were there a couple of minutes earlier? They're trying to go around the city, and it's just difficult, and it's disturbing. And I had a call from, actually, Ed Mulaney introduced somebody to me who was looking at an apartment house on Washington Street, two doors away from the bridge. He called me and said, what's going on with the bridge? And the only answer I could say is nothing. He said, well, I heard there might be a concrete wall in front of it. I said, there are no decisions made, but this is a property owner who is losing a sale because there's no action, there's nothing you can say, and they're not going to buy the property if they think there might be a wall in front of it, and they can't park, and they can't get to their property. So thank you very much for your support in bringing this up tonight.
Great. Thank you, Terry. Okay. Up next, we have Mr. Ed Mulaney.
Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me this time to speak, and I want to echo many of the comments that Terry Murphy made. And sometimes it takes people who have lived outside the area to come forward and take a leadership role, which Terry has done professionally with the Washington Street Association. I want to commend you also for making this effort to bring attention to CSX with the National Transportation Surface Board to move this forward. Being a lifelong resident, first of all, what an exciting time to be living in Allegheny County in Cumberland right now, as said by your budget and information of things getting better. I think we are in the crest of a real renaissance right now, and I think the bridge issues on the west side have been a challenge. I'm a lifelong resident, a proud lifelong resident of Allegheny County, and specifically Cumberland, Maryland, specifically on the west side, and have seen the impact personally of three bridges in failure are being closed, what it's done not only to the community, but what it's done to our reputation for visitors coming to town. There is light at the end of the tunnel, literally speaking, when you say about the Cumberland Street Bridge and the Fayette Street Bridge, and that's two out of three. But the one that seems to have taken a backseat is one that's been closed longer than the other, which is a very vital link on the main artery. That's my old paper out as a kid in high school, and I remember traversing that street very much and seeing people walking and, not so much biking then, but traveling this majestic street. Well, the lifeline has been taken away with that particular artery being closed. Until your comment and all the work of the Washington Street Association, we weren't sure what was going to happen, and we still aren't, but we appreciate your efforts to hopefully go forward with this. As a downtown manager, which I was for 15 years, many times I sent people on a walking tour up Washington Street, and that was very nice. In times, I would say, drive it. That would be taken away from the new downtown manager right now, who could say, walk it, but you can't drive it well without zigzagging around. It's very difficult. And I would tell you, recently, within the last couple of weeks, I had people in from Washington State, Oregon, and the same people that Terry was talking about, that were looking for properties up on Washington Street, and the bridge being closed was a deterrent. So it did impact sales and did impact the viability of what was going on here. So I would just like to say, I think it's so important to get that back open, not only for our community, but for our tourism and for our visitors to our town. It's a majestic street like no other. When I was on a recent trip to Oregon, two people knew about the Great Allegheny Passage, the CNO Canal, which two are the top 10 trails in the United States. They knew about... the CNO Canal, which two are the top 10 trails in the United States, they knew about the Western Maryland Scenic Railroad with the old steam engine. The word is out that Cumberland is a place to come to. If you recall, an editorial in the paper recently from California to Cumberland, a gentleman moved here and was really singing the accolades of property values and lifestyles and community involvement. They particularly mentioned Caprelli's Bakery is one of their favorite places to come on a walking tour. So anyhow, it's all economics, but it's more an economics, it's putting our best foot forward and showcasing what we have to offer. So your efforts are greatly appreciated by not only the people that live on Washington Street, Fayette, Cumberland, the entire west side, but the entire, I would think, city of Cumberland and Allegheny County. It's a garden spot, it's a beauty spot in Maryland, thanks for helping put it back together. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
Well, gentlemen, this is an issue that I've spent a lot of time on, and Commissioner Caprelli, when you were on city council, we met on this after the first bridge strike in August 19th, 2017, a CSX train struck and destroyed the Washington Street Bridge, and to this day, three and a half years later, CSX has not fixed the bridge. A solution, supported by Comptroller Francho, Senators Cardon, Van Hollen, Congressman Trowde, and requested by local officials, has been met with opposition. This compromise would allow for the bridge to be replaced at current height with Allegheny County and the city of Cumberland paying the entire cost. Not only does CSX refuse to repair or replace the Washington Street Bridge, they are now actively opposing and blocking local government from fixing the problem. They seem fine with this bladed eyesore on one of Cumberland's finest streets, creating a safety hazard for everyone that lives in the city of Cumberland. They managed to operate for over 90 years with the bridge and continue to operate with the bridge in place, and yet they claim they cannot function properly with the bridge located there. Following year, June 21st, 2018, another CSX train crashed into a different bridge, Fayette Street, and the train kept traveling and struck the Washington Street Bridge again. There hasn't been any resolution for Washington Street, there doesn't seem to be much of a plan. We have been in contact last fall with the CEO of CSX, and I'll read some quotes that was his response to Congressman Trowne and Senator Van Hollen. He says that CSX and the city are not engaged in a dispute, but rather a joint effort to navigate conflicting priorities. There seems to be conflicting priorities of what needs to happen. He says the current Washington Street structure is failing and in need of a replacement. It's failing and in need of replacement, I can't imagine why the bridge would be failing. And finally, CSX is actively engaged on this matter and intends to work expeditiously towards a resolution that benefits all stakeholders. You know, if it was a county truck that hit a CSX bridge and slowed them down, not for three and a half years, but for three and a half minutes, it would be front page news, we would have a team of lawyers, and every person in their organization would be working tirelessly to get the bridge reopened. And I think that is the biggest issue with these railroads, is they're so tight with the government, you can't do anything to them, you can't regulate them, and the only way to get accountability, unfortunately, is through the Surface Transportation Board. So I'm very optimistic that we're going to get a resolution. The Surface Transportation Board, it's appointed by the United States Senate, it's people like you and me that hopefully are going to stand up for the residents of Allegheny County and Cumberland for this horrible, horrible thing that's happened to us. And I'm not going to criticize anything that's going on in the past, but today, the only path forward to open this bridge, I think, is going through the National Surface Transportation Board. So gentlemen, that's what I'm asking for tonight. I think that this is the only way, if we ever want to have a bridge open, that we have to do it through legal action.
Sir, is that a motion?
That will be a motion for a formal resolution.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda, we just have a few items. Administrator Bennett.
Thank you. Thirteen items on your consent agenda tonight. Item five is Resolution 21-8, an amendment to Allegheny County Rules and Regulations governing employees. Item six is a Care First Blue Cross Blue Shield Dental Plan Renewal for July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Item seven is U.S. General Services Administration Lease Amendment for Property at PPG Road, and it'll be a two-year term, and extended up to five. Item eight is Penmar Recycling Agreement for July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Item nine is the Maryland Judiciary Security Grant in the amount of $168,500. Items 10, 11, and 12 are three separate scattered housing sites, approval to be sold. The first one, $41,500 for 706 Get Bar Drive. The second one, $54,100 for 540 Fairview Avenue. And the final one is $35,000 for 127 Polk Street. Item 13 is the Allegheny County Emergency Housing Program Grant Agreement in the grand total amount of $151,112, and that's the one to be on behalf of HRDC Social Services and the Family Crisis Resource Center. Item 14 is the State Fiscal Year 2022 Fiscal Year 21 Homeless Solutions Program Grant Agreement in the amount of $236,900. Item 15 is Declaration of Surplus Property to surplus a 1995 John Deere Baco. Item 16 is Declaration of Surplus Property for three seized vehicles, two seized vehicles. And item 17 is Allegheny County Mental Health Advisory Board Appointments, appointing Kristin Thomas, Yola Slider, Kayla Long, Stephanie Hutter-Thomas, David Bina, I hope I got that correct, Carrie Moffett, and Ginger Lee, two varying terms.
Great. Gentlemen, is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Okay, because we have some people signed up, we'll let them go first tonight. We have Mr. Naga Bhishan?
Yes, sir.
Please.
First of all, I'll thank you, our honorable Commissioners to give us this chance to speak to you directly. My full name is Naga Bhishan. I usually go with a short name, Bhishan. Half the documents and photos are given to Ms. Simpson, and I have some more with me. We built a house in 1998, more than 30 years ago, in Harwood Drive. Everything was forest, completely. Fortunately, or unfortunately, things have changed. It has become a roaring traffic nightmare, lot of houses are built up situation, lot of side roads are built up situation. And next road to us is called Spruce Wood Drive. Those people who live in Spruce Wood Drive, they have their mail on the road. Somehow, for no reason, I don't know, they didn't tell me, I guess they didn't notify the county, they decided, Ms. Simpson has a photo, decided to put the mailbox in front of our houses. It affects in two ways. First of all, my driveway on the left-hand side is small and there's a ditch. Unfortunately, I do have a long trailer. To make a right-hand turn, I had to cut out the traffic from the right and the left, it would take a long time. Second one, excuse my language, it's got a nuisance for 10 people, 10 families to stop by right in front of our house to pick up their mail. It's not just step mail, they have to pick up like this, they had to cross over from right side to left side. I have some photos where they walk to pick up their mail. This happens every day. In fact, as I'm concerned, I think I'm the only one in the entire subdivision has to go through with this nightmare. Can I produce some papers to you?
Please.
And the most important than my personal issue is, anybody who has seen Harwood Drive is a mono road, it's a single road, it's steep, there are grass on either side. If there's a blockage for one reason or the other, there was some sale was going on, a couple of weeks ago, part of traffic, entire block became to dead halt, even emergency vehicles could not get in either way, both situations. And this traffic, especially in winter time, the heavy trucks that come so fast like this to cross over. These people, 10 families, they don't stay in the car to pick up the mail, they have to get up, technically speaking, from the right lane to the left lane to pick it up. It's a dangerous situation. If we let the commission, if we let our government, by the way, I did, made an issue with the county two years ago, Ms. Linda has a copy, nothing was done. I'm going to have a second letter I sent to them, nothing was done. I don't know what was the issue, but I heard nothing about my complaint at the time. It's not a personal issue, it's a safety issue. All it takes is one person to get killed or hurt or something because cars come so fast, a situation. Emergency vehicles are dropped off, entire subdivision is cut off both ways, left side and right side. So considering all of these issues, they had these mailboxes on the road in the past. It's nothing new, they had their mailbox, for no reason, they transferred to my, unfortunately, left side of my driveway is small, right side, a lot of space, left side, a small one, and on top of that, there's a ditch. Ditch is always gets softer and softer and softer. My truck one time got into the ditch, because if I make a long turn, like situation, I don't have time to make a long turn, because I had to make a short turn, it cuts off, a lot of, sometimes people have to wait in most time for 10 to 15 minutes for me to clear up, get my trailer back into my driveway, a situation. And it's a safety issue.
Right.
And all these side roads, there are 10, 15, if any, every one of them plan to bring their mailbox issues to the Harwood Drive.
Okay.
Where's the limit?
Right.
This is going and growing and growing.
Right. So Mr. Bhishan, here's what we can do. We're going to have to research this because, you know, those are put up by the postal service, and even if they are in a county right of way, I don't know if we have jurisdiction over it, I'm looking at our engineering department, but that's something that we can look at, and I don't know if we can request that the boxes be moved or what, I don't, I don't know.
I did make some research, right now, that road is fully functional. FedEx is delivers, UPS delivers.
Right.
Big post office boxes, they don't leave it on the side road, they go inside. Also, I'm concerned, entire country, America, is not served by individuals by post office, they have certain distance they can only do.
Right.
Anything more than that, it is those guys who are responsible, either the mobile box mail or just wait there and pick it up, that's what is happening.
Right.
Right now, the box comes there, they wait there, they pick it up. Post office is not going to go to everybody's houses all over the country to deliver the mail, that's my impression, that's what I read.
Well, so unfortunately, the post office is a federal organization, obviously, and not one that we have control over. But we can certainly, Adam Patterson, our engineer, will be able to talk to you and be in touch with you.
I just spoke to a post office lady, she said there's a limit time.
Right.
There's a distance they can go. I mean, they can't go 10 miles to service one house. And I mean, so my main point is, this will be a bad precedent. If somebody wants to put somebody else's house, none of these people live in Harwood Drive, they all belong to entire Spruce Wood Drive. If everybody wants to put their mailbox in Harwood Drive, there is a limit.
Right.
And moreover, I did my part, I know there's a time limit for all these issues, I did submit my issues with the county, and Ms. Simpson has a copy, two years ago, nothing happened. Then send another letter, nothing happened. Then finally, I decided maybe I should come to speak to you people, to give us a favorable opinion, but I think it's very dangerous because road is steep, big trucks comes there, even emergency vehicles cannot get in, cannot get in, simply cannot get in, only one road and the two on either side. It is blocked for him for simple reason, the police and somebody with a heart attack, they can't get out of the situation. So I think we need to get this practice out of the way to make sure there's a freeway onto this drive. That's all my request.
Okay.
Anything else I would like to ask any questions of?
Mr. Bhishan, if you would, just let us have a week to two to look into this and try to figure out what exactly is going on, and then we'll get back with you with any resolution we may have of it, or at least let you know where we stand and what we know. So give us a little, I apologize, no one looked into it before, things have changed here now a little bit, we have the file, we'll look into it, we'll certainly get back to you with some kind of answer.
I hope for the future, not today, maybe another 20 years, where the house is fully crowded, so we have no president, we have other guys and use the Harwood Drive, that's one of the things that I'm thinking of.
Okay.
Thank you, sir, have a good day, I really appreciate it for your time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We do have one more person signed up to speak tonight, Tony Van Meter.
Hey, thank you for giving me a couple minutes to sign my dilemma.
Yep. You can take off your mask if you want.
Here's a letter I typed up today and some pictures of the bridge. We live on Switzer Lane, which is off Bedford Road. There are seven families that this bridge affects. We've been out there since 2008. Most of the families have been there longer than us, but we've watched the bridge deteriorate a lot over the time that we've been there. As it stands right now, there is about a four-foot hole along the backside of the bridge where it's all just washed out because that rear wall is crumbling underneath of it. So the way the ground is laid out, I guess, Miller's Construction Company owns from Bedford Road to the bridge, and on the other side of the bridge, my parents own the roadway, or the ground that the road is on, back to their house. We had, we did the 50/50 program with the county last year and got the road blacktopped. We had issues with the neighbors worrying about the dump trucks and everything coming over the bridge, so that kind of halted everything for a while, but we did finally get it all finished. But everybody has the same concern, this is our only access to our homes, and like I said, there are seven families back there. We live at the very end, my mom and dad live right below us, and then there are five others going out towards the bridge. My biggest concern, and I talked to Adam Patterson and a couple of the other county guys, county road guys, last year when we were working on the road, they came out and looked at the bridge, and there really wasn't anything that they could do to make it stronger for the trucks to come across. So the blacktop company had to bring half loads across to be able to finish the road, long story short. Now our concern is, you know, I mean, we have all of these families back there, my dad is in a wheelchair, if that bridge goes out, we have no access to the main road, we can't get emergency vehicles back to us. You know, nobody owns the bridge, it's not a county maintained road.
Right.
So what do we do, is our dilemma. You know, I mean, they're, out of the seven families, we are normally the only ones that end up doing any road maintenance, any maintenance to the bridge. We can't afford to put a bridge in for seven families and three other lots that have been for sale for the last 15 years.
Yeah, this is a tough one. Have you, do you have an estimate of what it would cost to repair the bridge?
I don't, I don't even know who to contact as far as a company to come out and even look at it.
Because we, you know, the difficult part is, it's not, it's not our bridge, we can put some money into it, we can, a portion of it. Adam, would you be able to get an estimate with her, and then we'll go from there?
Okay.
And then in the meantime, you know, I don't know what your neighbor's ability is to pay, but obviously, they are going to have to kick in too.
Yeah, they help not at all with the blacktop for the road.
Right. So, and that's part of the problem with these 50/50s is, it's 50 from the county, it usually ends up 50 on a few people.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
See what we can do.
Okay. Okay, any help that you can give us, we greatly appreciate.
Great.
Because when the bridge collapses and we're all stuck back there, I don't know what we're going to do.
It's. Do you want these back?
Thank you.
You want your photo? Oh, we can keep that.
Get them, Adam.
Perfect, okay. Administrator Bennett?
Nothing further from me.
Attorney Beaman?
I don't have anything further, thank you.
Commissioner Caprilli?
Nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Briner?
Sir, I'm good this evening.
Oh, man, I got to break the trend, okay. We got two more announcements. We're getting some restaurant and caterers relief grants. That will open tomorrow morning. Allegheny County is going to receive $251,597.99. This is through the Department of Commerce. It's the third round of restaurant relief through Maryland Department of Commerce. Caterers, drinking places, restaurants, other eateries are all eligible. They do need to demonstrate a need for assistance. And businesses that have already received a grant may apply again. It can be used for capital, rent, payroll, job training, expand outdoor dining, PPE, et cetera. The applications will start tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., and will run until 4 o'clock on Friday, May 7. And that's going to be on our website, so you can check that out. And then the other one that we will have, this will be the first one, I believe, for nonprofits. This one is going to be for $232,000, and this will be through Economic Development. And so priority is given to nonprofits who have not received money in the past. It's only eligible to Allegheny nonprofits with a physical location. They must be 501(c)(3)'s, and awards will be based on need due to COVID-19. The grant sizes are going to be $5,000 to $50,000. That one will open up on May 17. So we've heard a lot from nonprofits who haven't been eligible for a lot of stuff, and they will be eligible for that one. Okay, gentlemen, with that, we have a couple weeks off. Our next public business meeting will be Thursday, May 13 at 5:00 p.m. Thank you.